Felice, regular meeting of city council to order October 6th, 2020 here at the Stafford County Annex. And are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, are there any citizens comments? Consent agenda approved minutes, regular council meeting September 15th, 2020 and special council meeting September 22nd and 29th of 2020. Salute. Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Appropriation ordinance 10-6-2020 in the amount of $121,622.67 and petty cash in the amount of $301.58. Salute. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay. Department head, electrical department, Jeff.
Just a couple of things. First one for information, we've, we have two air compressors at the power plant that we start those engines with. We have an old one that's been around since the 60s and then one that we bought in the mid 80s. The one that we bought in the mid 80s had some problems. We did some work on it, but it's just not, it had a leak on the, on the, on the shaft behind the flywheel. It has a leak on the cooler. There has two cooler fins on the back of it, so we finally elected to take it to Wichita, down to S&amp;S to have it gone through, so it's down there at this time. We're using the old one. Next thing is, I think, I think she put in your packet a deal for a volt meter. We've had some problems in the west end of town. This is not the first time I've been called. And we can't pinpoint whether it's on the city, whether it's on the customer, or what's causing the fluctuations, but the people have bought two refrigerators in the last four years and now the panel on their cook stove is out. This started back when I was here the first time and we elected to put a transformer on them only, size big enough for what we would normally use for three or four houses in town. And at this point, it hasn't solved the problem. We thought for a while the oil wells were creating part of it, but it doesn't really, we've put capacitors on to kind of control the voltage on that and we cannot pinpoint what it is. I had a recording volt meter for about over 20 years. We bought it in the early 90s and now it's no longer usable. The software's not available to keep it running. It was an old DOS software program that we took out. It was a single phaser, three phase boat. And so I looked at this meter right here because if you take it into somebody's house, we can record from seconds up to hours on the voltage and then we can also see the harmonics. We can see the amperage. And I just need some way to try and track it and see if I can figure out what's causing this because I know they're getting tired of buying appliances and I'm getting kind of tired of the call. I've traced the line back and talked to several people that are on there and nobody seems to be having these problems. But I'd really like it, and this comes up, you know, we've done this several times over the years with different customers, but it's a deal that we can't see it because we can't tell the progression of what's happening and when it happens. Whether it's inside, you know, whether it's a wiring problem inside the house. I've talked to Brian, I talked to Brian Davis the other day for quite a while and they've been down there too and we can't pinpoint it. And so I would like to buy this volt meter to do that. And then of course, we use it, we can use it clear up to use it at the school or the elevator or whatever, but it's recordable. You know, if you want it to wifi to your phone, it can do that. It can set off alarms. It just, it has several uses that it could be used for. But a volt meter to replace the one like the one that I have at the plant's about $12,000. So it's more that you can take out in the weather and hang on transformer bank and that. But I think from this point, this, this type of meter will be good enough for what we're trying to chase. And I don't think there's any need to invest that kind of money in a big meter that you may only use once a year, so.
Pretty investment. Pretty lot of it.
I think so. You know, I just, I don't want to blame it on anybody, but I think we've all been through that, you know, and there's just, there's no way to pinpoint what it is without having some kind of verification for, well, I mean, it'll record up to six weeks. It has, it has quite a few capabilities. Anyway, the only other thing that I've got is that we're, we finally have got, right away, west of town, guys have been framing polls and the phone company will be out tomorrow to locate theirs and the poles are framed to the point we'll start going in the air with them. So hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have poles in the air, so. That's where I'm at.
Questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff?
I'm fine with it. It's a good investment.
I guess I'd mention to approve, you have to spend $2,750 for a blue 3540 monitoring kit.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Order department, Jason.
Uh, one thing on here, I just need a okay to get well eight repaired from Rosenkrantz. When I put that on the sheet there, it's around $7,000 if I do remember.
79, 78, 40 something? Yeah, 74, yeah.
Do we pay tax on that?
Yes, we have to. It's production, yeah. Yeah, we have to pay tax on it.
So what's that, Jason?
It's the one behind the nitrate plant. One of them, seven, seven and eight. It's the one on the, it's the one on the west side.
Any more discussion, Jeff?
I checked into that same pump. Seems like good price. We need it, we need it, I guess. I don't think anything like that. The warranty's been, been longer than I think that nitrate plant, that well was put in, nitrate plant.
2012. Okay, yeah. Yeah, they, they, Troy called me after they pulled it out because I was the one that made contact on it and he said that the, that they also, the collars on the pipe and that stuff were in really rough shape for only being in there for eight years. Whether it was an inferior quality of stuff that went in, it was a ground force pump. I mean, there was no reason why it should have failed, but anyway, it did and it's going to have to be replaced, so.
They got a timeframe on that?
I think since we let them know, I think they'll get it back in, so pretty much when.
We got five now. Steel?
The drop pipe? Or is it cert lock? Says it's bad shape.
I think it must have been steel. I don't think it was, I don't think it was a cert lock. I don't believe it was.
I'd make a motion to approve the bid for $7,496.58 plus tax for Rosenkrantz to fix well number eight.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
The other one was on First Street, we're gonna, what's the house on the hill? Between Nutting and?
West.
West, the house on there, they're wanting to move that. Their water service out towards the street or just get it out of the lady's garage, under her garage?
The water service runs under Mrs. Weber's garage at this point.
So there on Nutting on the corner, we were gonna dig a bell hole and see if we couldn't get the gentleman to sit there and bore underneath that instead of having to tear up our street. And he would do it for 1,500 and then we're just digging the yard and dig a bell hole right outside so we can make that turn to go in there and run the, run the blue poly in the street or let him pull the blue poly in through it. So that way we don't have to dig that whole street up to the alley. And that's what I was thinking about, just wanted to bore it so we didn't have to have a, have that street sinking down for the next five to eight years, so instead of tearing it up since we just, uh.
So you're going from the corner of?
Nutting.
First and Nutting?
Yeah.
Bored at West?
Yeah. And then, then we have to.
Basically right under the street or along the street?
Under the street. With the south side across. For one, there's quite a few utilities right there.
South side of First Street, Nutting, that corner.
North of Nutting and First. Right along the curb about so far out and just shoot it right down there and then turn it and go right into their yard on the hill there. The reason I want to do that is because there's a lot of telephone and utility, other utilities in that.
There's fog rotters in there.
And the parking and everything.
Getting far.
One time a hit in that and we could probably afford to do 15 borings. And that's what I'm just nervous about because it's really close. And if we can stay out in the street, it would stay away from everybody and then all we gotta do is cross them and then we get the, get the vac truck to find the, find their stuff and get it out of there.
That service now sits north of there and goes across under Mrs. Weber's garage and in the back of that house, it goes clear across through that property.
Have you got a price on boring out there at the fire station yet?
3,000, I had it on that sheet. It was right at 3,000.
Do you want to go at the same time?
Well, we could, but he was, he didn't want to, I didn't know if we wanted to try to do that this year or just hold off and do it because he said either way it's going to be the same price, either if he's here or not, so. Because I asked him that too.
Yeah.
I just did one. Huh?
It is before.
Well, I thought so too. I just did when I was sitting there and tear up the street.
Pretty heavily traveled the street, you don't want to be messy.
So. I was just wanting to see what you guys thought about it, if you had a better idea or what we could do there, so.
I'm good with it.
Yeah. And the last thing on the water is I just want to let you guys know that it's getting close for the media to be changed in those vessels in the nitrate plant. So hopefully we could budget that for the next two or three years and then, because from what I was told, that's $20,000 apiece and there's four of them. So that's what I was told.
Does that include getting rid of the old media?
I haven't found that much part of it yet because I didn't know, I can get the final numbers, but I thought we could start, I thought we could start working towards that and then maybe in two or three years we could sit there and get a, if we could, you know, start budgeting for it now, then we could start getting it done in two or three years. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
You have to do that all at once, every single one of them, or can you stage that year by year?
Well, we could probably stage it. We could probably do that, but it, I'm not for sure, I'm not for sure if it, you know, but, and I imagine you could. I really could, I really do. And then if they could come in and do one, like the, the first one, and then do second and third every year, and we could probably, we could probably do that, yes. But I could find, I could find out more. I just wanted, I just wanted to touch base with you without doing a bunch of paperwork yet and then just say that that's coming up. Not, not now, but it's, it's going to be coming around the corner here, so.
Agent, see what information you can find out, bring it to council.
Yeah, okay.
And council, anybody want to make a motion regarding that the boring? Is it, they don't need one?
We've got a consensus, I don't think we need one, it's under the spending limit.
Okay. Sounds good, okay. Anything else?
Not on the water, enough wastewater now.
Okay, council, any questions, comments, or concerns for Jason? Okay, moving on.
Hey, just a second. Oh, Jeff, did you need this invoice prayed from standing for the wire?
No, that's for truck.
For what?
Oh, for the truck part, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're not waiting for that.
Oh, yeah, that's just, those are estimates.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Grant administrator, have you heard anything from Lisa?
If we need anything, she's there.
All right. Police chief, Chief Adams.
I just got two things. One, I wanted to see if I get council's approval for me and Tori. And I, I don't know if Jamie knows, I just thought about Dustin today, but we've been shorthanded. We haven't had much time off, but our vacation time, we're coming up to the end of the year. Next year we'll be full staff, so people will be able to take. I just, with the, the time that we have left when Dustin gets back from the academy, if I go burn my 12 days that I'm going to lose if I don't use them, then that just makes her working longer again if not getting any time off and vice versa. And so I just wanted to see if I get council's approval if this one time we can, whatever people don't use. I know Tori's going to take a few. She's got 11 and a half days, I have 12 days. I'm not sure, I just got her sheet in mind. I didn't get Dustin's sheet to see how many days he has, but if anybody has anything left over at the end of the year, I just want to see if I could, if we could, would be able to roll that over this one time. We just, we've been shorthanded. I mean, he's been in the academy since July, so it's just been us two working and it's just been kind of hard to take any vacation, plus with some of the cases that we picked up, getting any time off. Me and Tori will be headed to Texas Thursday morning at 4:30 in the morning. We've got to go down there to interview a victim on another case and then we're going to interview the victim, turn around and drive straight back and then we'll both go back to work. So that's just kind of what we're, we're hoping to do, but I just wanted to see if we could get that rolled over.
Jamie, would it be one of an issue if we, if council decided to do that? Okay. Council, what are your thoughts?
How many days can they carry?
Um, you can currently carry over five days, 40, 40 hours.
And this would be 12 for both of you?
At 12. Well, no, I have 12 now. I think I'm actually going all.
Yeah. We can get better numbers on what it would be.
Yeah, that's.
Because if you get it pulled out, we can add it all in and then find out the exact numbers and I can put those in the report and you guys can approve it.
Okay, we got one. If we could get that together, we can take care of that at the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's absolutely fine. I just kind of wanted to get it out there while it was early in October. Uh, the other thing I was going to ask council was to see how much, um, this is going to be the one time, last time, and we'll be full staff next year. We really watch our budget, we watch what we're doing, everything like that. I wanted to see how much or is there a percentage or what that we, when, what we have that we didn't spend in our budget this one time, be able to roll over into our equipment fund. This is, I'd, I'd like to get that money put back in there. You know, next year we'll be back, all three vehicles will be running 40 hours a week. You know, right now the Dodge pickup's sitting and only doing two eight-hour shifts a week, so we're not using much fuel. So we're not having the expenditures right now because we've been shorthanded for this last year. But next year we'll be back up to full staff and I just kind of like to, to see if I'm able to put any extra over back into that emergency or the equipment fund. But I don't know how that works. I know I talked with Jamie and we were going over, we get 15,000 a year goes into there, but I was looking, I'd like to try and see if I can put extra on top of that and roll it over into there.
Can we transfer out at the end of the year, don't we? So we could actually, at the time that we do that, we can see where his budget is and make that decision at the time of, because we'll know actually exactly how much is left.
Right, I just didn't know. I was just wanting to see if it was doable, um, if we were allowed to do that, we can get that done.
Usually we have that information the last, I think we have it usually the last meeting.
Of the year.
Of the year, ready for you. I think in the past council might have met like literally the last day, but we, Pam and I just have it ready for your approval.
Because we worked hard this year.
We're only, at October 1st, we had only spent 51.4% of our budget by October 1st. I mean, we were really watching what we're doing, how we're doing things and making sure that we're, we're being as efficient as possible. So that was just kind of my thing. From my figures, it would be around, I think, under budget will be at like 40, 40 some thousand dollars under what we were, what we were budgeted for. So I just kind of wanted to see, I mean, there's a few things that we need to get at the end of the year, but I'm trying to stock up ammo is one of them. I think the prices are going to keep going up, so we want to, we want to get ammo because we're getting really low upstairs. Right, yeah. Getting it on the list of when it finally comes because I think the price is going to keep going up. I mean, it's over a dollar a round now. We were buying it before for 30 some cents a round. And it's over a dollar now, so. Yeah, there's a few things we want to give, but I just wanted to try and see if we could do that with our year-end budget and stop that money away, so.
Yeah, and I'll get those numbers and, you know, the only thing is just, like, it's not, it's not that we can't do that. But just because the budgets are different, like, I mean, it's all still the same money. Like, we don't start over with new money every year. I just want it.
Right, basically what you build using your budget gets rolled back into the general fund for the following year. Essentially.
Essentially, yes.
I mean, it's still, it's not like you start out with a $10 million.
And he, and he does watches, but he watches his numbers and I actually just pulled up the same thing that he was looking at for every fund and everywhere but mine's looking really good because of the playground equipment got taken out of there, so I'm like 100 and some percent over. Not over, but yeah, so.
Just magic on the bottom number, that's it.
Yes. That's all in your line, you know, just.
Okay, council, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns for chief? Okay. Have we heard anything from Chief Sanders? Nothing, okay. Okay, Jamie, what you got?
Okay, um, in my report, I have mentioned the money that we got from NPR was a little bit less than the 10,000. They paid $9,283.36, which is a difference of 31, sorry, And I believe in the motion that we made in the beginning of the project was 2,000 and some, so I am requesting just a motion to be made with that 3,000 number in there for the auditing purposes.
And this is for the?
The camera system. There was a little bit less in the NPR fund than I had originally thought. And then they came back and I sent them, sent them like a pen, 10-page document on all the conversation, just showing them that I had been working on it since October of 19 and the delay with the coronavirus and all of that. And they said, in good faith, they wanted to pay it, so.
$600, no?
Okay, anybody want to make that motion?
I'd make a motion for $3,164.64 instead of $2,536.50 to correct the motion for the meeting on June 2nd, 2020.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, and also in the packet and the report, we got a, a letter regarding our sewer backup and I am just requesting permission to write a letter back to the insurance company with a copy of our ordinance that talks about the backflow valve needing to be in place. It's ordinance number 962. It just states that here on out that the city is not responsible for sanitary sewer water waste damages which may be occasioned by use or misuse of the sanitary water sewer system and that each resident needs a backflow valve. I know we've discussed these issues in the past and I just wanted a letter or permission to, to write the letter letting them know that we have this in place and not really an "and" that we have that ordinance in place because it's, I mean, it's, that's how it is. And I, I've been trying to think about how to try to do more maybe education to the community on that ordinance just because I feel like maybe when it was passed, it wasn't, like, people just don't know about it. I mean, if you don't get the paper and you don't read the ordinances or what's passed and you're not paying attention with, you know, Facebook being more prominent on, on things, I might try to educate our community members just so they are aware of different things like that when those come up.
Counsel, everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
John, we just need consent, some crap.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, like I told Jamie, for $7,000, I'm not sure you want to get me involved. And so I think she's fine handling it.
All right, Jamie, you got the consent from council. Anything else?
Um, can I have permission to pay RC Computers $10,658 that will be reimbursed for the Spark funding, but we have to pay it and then we have to submit it to the county to get it paid.
Is it already approved? Is it already approved?
I mean, yeah, our Spark, our Spark plans already approved and everything, but I just didn't want a check going out without you guys approving it. And so basically, we'll do this, we'll pay Randy and then we'll turn it into Nita on Tuesday of next week and get reimbursed is how that all will work.
$10,658 even?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay RC Computers $10,658 to be reimbursed through Spark funding later.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Is that it, Jamie?
I think so.
Only it was a no there, wasn't it? Yeah, for testing, I forgot all about that for the gloves and the trucks. Yes.
That's on the bucket truck?
It's on all, it's on all three trucks and the rubber goods. Yeah. It's a once a year deal we do usually every September to, to get the trucks up and make sure that they're still safe to use and all the cover up and all the stuff that's on the trucks. Think everything passed. Except for crack, yeah.
I'd make a motion to pay invoice number 72329 in the amount of $2,402.75 to Protective Equipment Testing Laboratory.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. All right. Unless there's anything else. So John?
In April of 2018, you guys adopt a resolution expressing your intent to authorize the issuance of IRBs or industrial revenue bonds for the construction of the grocery store in the amount of 3.8 million dollars. I received about 10 documents yesterday requesting the, for my review for the approval of an ordinance to issue those bonds. I have not talked to Gilmore Bell, which is the law firm utilized by Stafford County Economic Development for the purpose of these bonds. I was a little curious as to why the resolution was passed in April. I was a little curious as to why the resolution was passed in April of two thousand eighteen and we're just now issuing those bonds. My assumption was that somebody has not been paid three point eight million dollars, but I don't know. I've not touched base with them. I've not looked at all the paperwork. It has to be done by November third, so it guts a time. But I just wanted to call it to council's attention.
And they will be here November third?
Oh, they're coming.
Who's?
Gilmore Bell.
He basically explained it as the finalization of the project. But like John, I don't, it's been two years.
It's been finished for at least a year, so I don't know what, why it took so long. I don't have any idea.
He just called to give me a heads up that I was getting an email. And about that time, I got an email from John saying, what the heck? So.
Why did it take so long? My question.
But we're looking into it. I talked to Carrie Ronan a little bit about it and she said the same thing, that they're just finishing up on things, so.
Okay.
I didn't find it my job to keep track of it, so.
Okay. Anything else, John?
That, that's all. Oh, and the two properties, one twelve South Prairie and five eighteen West Fourth, which were the two other properties the city wanted to inspect. None of the landlords responded to our petition in the district court. So last week or the week before, we filed a motion requesting permission to be exempted from the Kansas Supreme Court rules, or administrative order, which allows us to, which prohibit us currently from taking default. We filed a motion asking to be exempt from that rule so we can take default and have access to that property. And I think those are scheduled for Zoom hearings like, and next week, so those are progressing.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for John? Okay. Is there anything on old business we need to discuss?
Just an FYI for the house numbers. There's at least over a hundred houses that aren't marked with my zooming up and down the streets. The electric line project for Northwest Street is complete, correct? Can I please take it off?
Well, you gotta do something here and there so we can get some revenue back. That guy's hurry up and get it built.
Water tower.
Uh, the water tower, he emailed, John had emailed with some changes in the contract. And I sent those over last week. And I think he had maybe been out of town today. This afternoon I got the revised contract and he's looking to in the mail. So once I get those, I guess, do you want me to get permission to sign now?
Can you make sure everything?
Okay. Can't wait till the next meeting? Or just with approval of it?
It's, it's been approved, it's been adopted. We just had, we added some liability provisions, some provisions related to arbitration.
So I, we can just get permission for Mark to sign that?
Yeah, as long as my stuff is in there.
Did we already do that?
We, we've, you've already, with my review of it, I proposed some changes. I just want to make sure my changes are in the contract. And as soon as we check that, it'll be ready to be signed.
Okay. Just kidding. I have a lot of information on the truck parking. Jeff has included the quote from Stanion, I believe. That is the, the twelve hundred, the, correct me if I'm wrong, the underground wire of the twenty-seven hundred dollars from Stanion. That is the underground going to everything. We figured out the pedestals are going to be about four hundred and fifty dollars apiece if we order twelve of them. And then the secondary between the pedestals is going to be two dollars and seven cents per foot. I have a spreadsheet working out. My brain ended up just kind of not working by the end of the day. So I want to organize this a little bit better because I've been learning all about rock and quarries and more, more things that I didn't know I needed to know. So we have kind of a good start. I talked to Chad a little bit and he said about five thousand dollars for the initial dirt work. But I feel, in my opinion, that we need to get a good figure on the area and what you got, like, your vision, so we can get square footage areas so we can get better numbers at rocks and the, and the dirt work and everything. I don't know how you guys want it set up or how you, how you vision everything so we can start.
Is there still line on it?
Yeah.
Got it the other day. I did, yeah.
Or do you want to start later? Because he did. Our current, our current contract holder wanted to know if he could plan, which won't be done till summer. So I guess if you want to do that, then we have however many months that is, eight months, nine months? Or do we want to get going and get the trucks off of the streets sooner rather than later?
We also have the issue, we prepared an ordinance which caused a number of people to appear at the next meeting. And then we've not really adopted an ordinance. We discussed having a working group to review that ordinance.
I think we need to lay out where we want it, how big we want it, and let him farm the rest of it.
Do you guys have visions on how you want it set up?
We talked about that once already, yes, but, you know, we kind of marked it off how big it was supposed to be. But as far as how they park in there, I don't remember how that goes.
Just like how?
I'm just gonna hand you on how many paths we buy and where the mower goes. And, you know, whether you park them out or you park them to the center. You know, there's a lot of variables in there, but I mean, there's none of them very costly to change, so.
I guess I just want to see them all keep rolling and try to do it this winter. You know, like Marshall said, just let them farm everything, but that square, squared-out area that we flagged off.
Okay.
Hopefully we can take it step by step.
I don't believe we ever really determined how wide we wanted it though, did we?
Yeah, I drove a T post out there.
We had a couple of discussions.
I think it ran by water treatment facility limit?
Farther west, I think, than the end of that fence.
We drove kind of where we thought, yeah.
Yeah.
And then we were going to the fence.
Five hundred feet from the east side to the west side?
I think that's right.
Something like that?
Yeah.
So it's not out there, so maybe.
Just mark to a post is all.
Yeah, we just mark, I didn't want to put nothing out in the field because I knew he was going to be working it and stuff, but.
Okay, so, okay.
I would say we need to go out there now that he's got a cut. And we need to mark from that post back to the south and over and tell him he can farm everything outside that.
And we'll drop a new contract for the wheat. Because I think it was just for the miler.
We can do a contract. We can do a contract.
We're working down.
So that I can, after working on getting the groundwork, it's, uh, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay.
I don't think so.
All right. We have a fifteen-minute executive session to discuss employee performance for non-electric personnel.
Oh, new business, the no parking?
Oh, excuse me, my bad, I missed that.
Basically, on that, John and I did some research and Alan just needs to tell us where he wants the sign. So basically, we know where the sign needs to go and we can move forward if you guys are okay with that.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
When, um, so when, when street signs are put up, it's in the STO that, that traffic has to abide by street signs. So there's not really an ordinance, our city code doesn't say that we have to pass an ordinance for all of the no parking or one ways or anything like that. It's all, I mean, like, the one way we did it around the street, it was approved, the plan was approved. City staff was directed to put up signs and it was in effect, so.
Yeah, we had that discussion, uh, you got to bring up there on South Exchange also. Do you want to, or, mark it down?
Yes, thank you. Uh, there is a, a place down on South Exchange by Cornwall Park. With the county being down there, there's a lot of vehicles and bigger trucks parked along the roadway a lot. And sometimes people just have a hard time getting through. And it was brought up by not only the county, but our city crew when we were doing streets. Said it might be nice to have no parking along that park area.
On the east side of the street?
On the east.
Next to the park.
Even no parking or even like two-hour parking or just have it marked?
Yeah, and that's what I think, the, the two-hour parking, just because you have the soccer games in the spring for the little kids and you're going to have to have places for the, so I, I would like to see a two-hour parking there. I think it'd make it easier and people could still park for their kids.
Over here by the, like, where I just parked out here, isn't it like two-hour, one-hour, two-hour parking from eight to five, Monday through Friday? Like, and maybe we can get something like that where the weekends would be exempt for those games.
Or just, you could do a bit of parking over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A bit parking.
I, I like that.
I like that, a bit parking only.
That's, that's the best.
We'll find out what we can put down there if that's on the east side. And should we go ahead and do the, the north side of that park as well?
I like to go back down there. You know, I just can't remember how wide that road is, if it's a problem with.
It's not very wide, you can park cars on.
On both sides.
But typically, I mean, the only time it's that way is during soccer games. Because I come down it last Saturday.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's tight, but you've got everybody at soccer games. I don't think outside of that is.
It's okay. Yeah, I just couldn't remember. I had, I don't.
I mean, there is semi on the north side most of the while, but.
Definitely on that west side is, is a problem.
He always parks there because somebody else always goes by.
Yeah, so, but I definitely think that west side's important.
Yeah. I'm fine with that.
Where are you, no parking on Main Street between Fourth and Fifth? And then South Exchange between, is that Hoolooey?
Hooloe and Candle.
Hooloe and Candle.
A bit parking.
A bit parking only.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Now we're ready.
All right. We've got a fifteen-minute executive, excuse me, fifteen-minute executive session to discuss employee performances for non-electric personnel, if you want, or Jamie. Everybody at the table?
And out.
Okay.
Uh, so move.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries will resume at seven fifty-nine. Call this meeting back to order.
Back date to October first, for now.
Yeah.
I'm here too.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to give Pam Watson a raise per her evaluation from twenty-sixty an hour to twenty-one, twenty-one an hour with it retroactive to first of October of twenty twenty.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
I'd make a motion to give Jason Wyatt a raise per his evaluation from twenty-six eighty an hour to twenty-seven sixty an hour retroactive to October first, twenty twenty.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
I'd make a motion to give Dustin Mountain a raise from sixteen dollars to sixteen fifty, effective November one.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
I'd make a motion to give Tori Perez a raise from seventeen fifty-one to eighteen dollars an hour, effective October first.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, having no more business, unless there's anything else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, do we have a five-minute?
Oh, wait, right back.
No, no, we don't really do that. Put that on there and then I accidentally put in the administrator report and it just.
And she made it public, so.
And then I made it public, so. I was just trying to give you guys a heads up.
Okay. Okay, having no more business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.